Good evening. I would like to welcome everyone and call to order the meeting for October 1st, 2024. Welcome to those of you in attendance tonight and to those of you watching via livestream. Thank you for your support of Stanley County Schools. I would like to draw your attention to two sets of flowers placed on the dais tonight. The first set is in memory of Ms. Tammy Mottzinger, prayers for her and her family. The second set is in memory of those lives lost in the western North Carolina mountain areas. The loss of life and devastation is almost unimaginable, and our thoughts and prayers are with those families and emergency workers. Please join me for a moment of silence for the two flowers mentioned tonight. Thank you. Next up on our agenda is the invocation and pledge of allegiance. I will now call Mr. Bill Sworensen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to come together to strive and work on behalf of the children and citizens of Stanley County Schools. We pray that your presence continues to be in our deliberations and decisions we make, and we ask that you lift up and heal our shattered communities in Appalachia. Grant them the healing that they need to recover, rebuild, and move on. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
The first thing up on our agenda tonight is the Stanley Stars recognition.
Good evening, Board members. Each month, Stanley County Schools selects two stellar certified and classified employees to recognize and celebrate as Stanley Stars. In the month of October, we would like to recognize Mr. Gregory Delaney, 7th grade science teacher at Albemarle Middle School. Unfortunately, Mr. Delaney was unable to join us this evening, as due to the hurricane, all of our Stanley Stars were given late notice. Mr. Delaney is being recognized for his remarkable adaptability and commitment to student success. When asked to switch from teaching 6th grade math to 7th grade science on short notice, Mr. Delaney embraced the challenge with enthusiasm and creativity. His ability to make complex concepts accessible and engaging has inspired a love of science in our students. Thank you, Mr. Delaney, for your flexibility and dedication to fostering a positive learning environment. We would also like to recognize Allison Van Ness, 3rd grade teacher at Norwood Elementary School. Unfortunately, Ms. Van Ness was unable to join us this evening. Ms. Van Ness is a tenured teacher that helped lead the 3rd grade team to success on EOGs at the end of last year. She mentors and collaborates with those on her team while also learning from them. In her classroom, she holds students to high expectations, pulling out each student's natural competitiveness, spurring them on to continuous improvement. This work is evident in both her students and in the data coming from her classroom. Students are able to speak about areas they need to improve in, as well as areas in which they excel. When students know their data, it translates into them being successful in school. Last year, Ms. Van Ness had 74% of her students' grade level proficient on the ELA EOG and 79% of her students' grade level proficient on the math EOG. The work she puts in daily helps to ensure that the students of Norwood have a solid foundation for their future. Next, we would like to recognize Ms. Janie Schu, teacher assistant at Albemarle Middle School. Ms. Schu, will you please join us up front? This month, we celebrate Ms. Schu, our incredible teacher assistant, for her outstanding dedication and creativity. When the need arose for a substitute art teacher, Ms. Schu stepped in without hesitation. She has brought enthusiasm and fresh ideas to our students. Her ability to inspire and engage our young artists has truly made a difference in the classroom. Thank you, Ms. Schu, for going above and beyond to support our school community. Thank you. And lastly, we would like to recognize Tanya Edwards, teacher assistant at Norwood Elementary School in abstentia. From the way she builds relationships with her students to the expectation she holds them to, Ms. Edwards, a 3rd grade teacher assistant, is leading math instruction at Norwood Elementary, and she is a star. Ms. Edwards is not afraid to interact with students through sports and physical activity, and it is a common occurrence to see her at recess playing with students instead of just supervising them. Last year, as a first-year 3rd grade teacher, she led over 83% of her students to pass the math EOG and was quite successful on the ELA EOG as well. This year, despite choosing to be a teacher assistant by title, she wanted to continue the work she started last year, stepping up and volunteering to teach 3rd grade math. Her students in Norwood Elementary School are extremely lucky to have someone of her talent and dedication on staff. And that concludes our Stanley Stars for the month of October.
Thank you. Ms. Schu, will you come up here and let us shake your hand real quick?
Okay, you want me to do the next one? Okay. Next...
I was just gonna give her the opportunity to kind of...
Next, we would like Ms. Pennington to join us at the podium. Ms. Beverly Pennington, Albemarle High School principal, has been honored with the Charlie Adams Distinguished Service Award for Region 6 by the North Carolina High School Athletic Association. This prestigious award is presented annually to one outstanding individual in each region with over 10 years of experience in education and athletics, recognizing those who regularly go above and beyond the call of duty. Thank you, Ms. Pennington, to your dedication to your students and to Stanley County Schools. Next, I'll ask Dr. Kelly Simmons to please join us at the podium. Dr. Kelly Simmons, Stanley Early College High School principal, successfully defended her dissertation, "Perceptions of College Readiness." Dr. Simmons has earned her doctorate from the University of North Carolina at Charlotte. Thank you, Dr. Simmons, for being an example of a lifelong learner to the students that you serve.
Dr. Dennis, may I add something? Just in case the board does not know, Ms. Kelly Ephard Simmons was my 4th grade student at Indy.
She taught me well, my favorite.
Very good.
And Dr. Simmons, we will have a nameplate for you, very short. At this time, I ask for all members of our Board of Education to stand and be recognized. Your choice. Come on down. Yeah, come on down! In September, Stanley County Schools Board of Education received the Gold Bell Award for Training, Excellence, and Commitment during the 2023-2024 school year. The Gold Bell Award is the highest professional development honor available to Boards of Education and recognizes that all seven of our Board members have met or exceeded the association's highest standards for completion of training. We are extremely fortunate in Stanley County to have a school board that is united in their mission to serve students, staff, and the community. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to make a motion that we amend the agenda by moving Section J, all of Section J, which is our auxiliary services, to after our closed session.
Okay, I have a motion to amend the agenda for all of Section J to come directly after the closed session. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. That has passed. Thank you. Now that we have finished our recognition portion of the meeting, next up, we have closed session. We will go in, I will entertain a motion to go into closed session for Personnel Matters, NC General Statute 143-318.11A6; Student Matters, NC General Statute 143-318.11A1; Attorney/Client Matters, NC General Statute 143-318.11A3.
Move we go into closed session.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? We are now in closed session. So we will move on to our consent agenda for the approval of the minutes from the September 3rd, 2024 regular meeting, the September 9th, 2024 special call meeting, and the September 19th, 2024 work session.
A move we approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion. Okay, a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. And now we have amended the agenda to move to Section J, Auxiliary Services. Mr. Benton asks you. Sorry, we moved year round.
Board, Madam Chair, thank y'all for allowing me to come to speak with y'all tonight. Just a couple things. Richfield Chiller, we'll do it first if you're okay. I bring to you the installation cost of a chiller that we purchased for Richfield Elementary. Total cost is $69,295 that we are trying to, that I'm coming to you for approval to install the unit. Alternate bid 1, that you see of $29,000, is for the pumps, the circulation pumps, and that is for new hot water heater. Most of the time when you replace a chiller, you go ahead and do the circulation pumps because it's pretty much part of the unit itself. So I'm looking for an approval from the Board.
Sorry, I was signing something. Did you give the total amount?
$69,295 total amount.
Garment Mechanical Services, so the Board will be approving the $65,000 and some change.
Correct. For Garment Mechanical.
Can we have a recommendation for a motion for Mr. Benton?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, sir. Actually, we will have that job completed before December, the end of December. So we're waiting until we get through the cooling season, and then we're gonna go into putting that chiller in. We have the chiller right now, and the chiller's actually sitting in Charlotte. And so we'll, Garment Mechanical, if this is approved, they will have the chiller and store it for us.
Mr. Benton.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you tell me what the age was of the chiller, the items that we are replacing? What kind of age was on those?
So I'm gonna say that the chiller, the rough age, we can't see the tag on it, but the rough age on it was probably 20 years old, which is, reaches life. They're only good for about 15, 20 years.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Okay, Madam Chair, we'll move on to the next item, which will be West Stanley bleachers replacement. We had three very competitive bids. There was actually six contractors invited to bid on it. Total cost of the base bid is for Stokes Construction for $371,655 with 150-day completion time, and the alternate 1, which is the preferred vendor, which is the light bleachers we've used at North Stanley High and South Stanley, to try to keep it all light district-wide, easier for parts and everything else. Total in that is for $382,985, and that will be replacing the visitors bleachers at West Stanley High.
And to note, it does have the same foundation issues as the North Stanley bleachers.
Correct.
And those have been identified by the independent contractor.
Correct.
Okay. We have a recommendation for the Stokes bid for the West Stanley bleacher replacement.
A move we approve Stokes Construction.
I have a motion?
Second.
And multiple seconds? Any discussion or questions?
Mr. Benton.
Yes, ma'am.
I know we're looking at the prices is higher than what we actually paid for the North Stanley bleachers. Can you just explain why there would be a difference there in that price?
Yes, ma'am. There's a little bit more of an ADA involved for accessibility, for handicap accessible for those sets of bleachers. There was a lot in place at North Stanley High prior to us starting the project. We just had to tie them in. West Stanley, there's a little bit more of an issue to meet the ADA laws in getting handicap accessible people to the bleachers. So there'd be more concrete work.
Do we know how long those bleachers have been there? Have they been there since the school was built? Any idea?
I'm gonna say yes. They've been there a very long time. So...
And Mr. Benton, I know the North Stanley project, the timeline for completing those bleachers was, I'm a bit of concerned for that school. Do you have a timeline for these to be completed if this is approved?
If this is approved, we have 150 days we'll be on their contract from the date they have a purchase order. And so we, I've spoken with the school, if we move forward with this, then we'll have accessibility to the bleachers as soon as football season's over, and we'll safeguard the area to where they can still hold soccer events and sporting events and that such.
Will we have to bring in additional bleachers like we did?
No, ma'am. So I've spoken with the school, and what we're gonna do is, is they've agreed that we will section off one side of the bleachers on the home side for home and home spectators, and then the other side for visitor spectators. So they'll be able to separate it.
Thank you. Any other questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, this has passed. Thank you.
All right, so this is a PowerPoint presentation that come out of work session, that we wanted to put together for y'all, just to update you on the status of our roofs district-wide. These were performed by myself and my staff. These were not performed by an independent contractor. So if you wanna take a look through it, we'll go through it, and so... Oh, you're good. All right, so we'll start with Baden Elementary. So right here, you have a foam roof over the cafeteria section. This section has been split and is in need of a repair. We have identified the areas. A lot of times, once that foam layer gets saturated, then you turn into more issues if you're not careful. If you, Ms. Hope, will go to the next one. Thank you. And that is an awning that had a foam top put on it sometime a while back. That foam roof right there is many, many years old, and so that is a full canopy, and it needs to be replaced as well, or the entire canopy to be replaced. If you go into replacing the entire canopy, as you can see, you have a lot of infrastructure sitting on top of that roof that will have to handle it as well. That is the asphalt shingle roof that is on the front building, and that one approximately has been replaced in 10 years, within the past 10 years. You can see some streaking marks on it, which indicate that there is weather from the asphalt shingles that are placed on it. So it needs to be replaced kind of in the future. This is your 3-5 building, which is a foam layer as well, and you can see it's starting to blister. So that one's on our radar for watching and replacing. East Albemarle. So East Albemarle, we had some work done to it in recent time. Left picture is some work that where the foam layer is split, and to the right is your, bottom right, is a layer that is on your cafeteria there. So what you see is a ballast top, which is the gravel, and then you have a foam layer that's under that. That is obviously a patch of an area that leaked it sometime. Locust Elementary. So Locust, same thing there. We have ballast roofing with foam. You can see some penetration points there. Just one quick note I want you to know about the ballast roofing is, you know, as my guys get up there and work, or anybody else, they walk on that, that's a penetration point from the rocks. So we have to take, safeguard it as best we can. That's the Jeff Shelton building there, and then we'll go to, this is the original building, and that's some seam damage that is done with the flashing. It's starting to decay on the outer half of the seam. This is in the office area. This is where a veneer wall joins a wall that is lower than it. That is the metal flashing that is gone. That's indications of the metal flashing being gone where the two walls meet each other. Millport. So Millport here, same thing, gravel ballast roof with foam underlayment. You see some roof drains there that have been tried to have fixes on them in past years, and that's on the main building there. There is an outer patch job that was done in some recent time. That is your outer foam layer where the gravel's been raked back, and some patching's been done on that foam as well. Norwood. So Norwood, there again, you see the rooftop is a gravel top with a foam layer. The roof's starting to blister, and the heat of the summer's starting to really show on that roof. Richfield. So Richfield, there was some work conducted on that roof. That roof, in a TPO roof, was installed on a section of that. That roof is in great shape, the TPO roof. Here, you will see EPDM roof membrane that is starting to decay and actually is turning loose on delaminating from its bottom layer. There's your foam over top of your gym. You can see the streaking that they're starting to, early stage of deterioration there as well. Stanfield. So you have a foam roof on your left, and that is over the cafeteria. It's starting to show its life and wear and tear as well. And on the right, you see an awning. The awning's very close to being, need to be replaced. There's, we are caulking several holes in that area, just trying to keep it dry up under them as best we can. Albemarle High School. This is an area on Albemarle High School that is a wood shop in the back. Of course, you can see there's starting to be some deterioration of that foam roof. That could have been from birds pecking at it, squirrels biting at it. That's just evidence of it right there. There's an outer, the image you see on the right that looks like a rectangular shape, that is skylights that have been covered over with a foam layer that indicates a lot of times where we go to look for leaks in those areas. That's a point of impact, very, very close. And you can see on the left, where actually there is a leak that is sitting on top of that one. There, on the picture on the left, you see a gym roof. You see water sitting on top of the roof because there's no roof drains installed. We install roof drains in those low areas to where they can get into the storm sewer system. The picture on the right is your science hall. That is the same ballast, foam-layered roof, and you can see that we've had area there that we have actually fixed recently. So we finally found it, got it fixed. North Stanley High School. North Stanley High School's starting to show its age in its roof. Here, you see the ballast and the foam layer turning loose along the skylight. That's in the gym area. That's in the gym area. South Stanley. South Stanley's foam roof on the main building, and it's starting to deteriorate pretty good. You can see actually the ballast starting to fall into weathered foam up under it, where it's starting to get saturating and deteriorating, it's falling into it. That is a patch that's been done on the outer half of the foam roof. Obviously, at some time, there was a pretty significant leak there along that flashing. Here you see the roof starting to deteriorate. This is, this is early, this is stages of points of impact for pretty significant roof leaks. Once that water impacts that area, it goes onto the decking, and the decking is kinda like when you seen those awnings, the decking material up under it's trade like that. And so that leak really could show up five classes over, and we not know it until we find that spot. West Stanley High School. We're actively, the image on your left now, that roof is actually with a roofing engineer firm, and they are designing that roof. It's sitting in DPI's hands now, and for their approval and their comments to come back. So we're getting pretty close to bidding on that roof and getting that roof changed out. That's over top of the gym. The building on your right is the CTE wing that's in the back half of the school. The brown spots you see kinda speckled around, and then the real dark areas on the front half are an issue with not having a roof drain there. And the dots areas are starting to show wear of the top layer wearing out to the microfiber up under. So right here, we put together, these are approximate square footage of our roofs. I say it again, it's approximate. We got these off of Google Earth. It takes a lot of time to measure your roofs. These are all our elementary schools. Then our middle schools here. And then our high schools. In a total, for your, for our entire district, we have, so, sorry, I jumped ahead. So the cost for a new PVC roof is about $20 a square foot installed. That's not removal of the roof that's there now. So that, that cost will increase because you have to pay for the removal of it, depending on how many layers there. So district-wide, roughly, we've got 1.4 million square feet of roofing surface district-wide. And TPO roof is, sorry, I didn't mean to jump over that one. So TPO is gonna be about $19 a square foot. Each one of those roofs gives you a pretty good warranty, some longevity.
So what's the difference between that and $19?
It's just, the TPO roof and a PVC roof is, is just a different material used. PVC's on, it doesn't, some spots, so it doesn't have the membrane in the middle like the top TPO lowered, TPO level roof does. It's just whichever one you prefer. They're both, they both have the same warranty, so they're gonna run you about the same life expectancy. Most of the time, we throw them in bids nowadays, when you bid a roofing job, to, because it's how easy and readily is one of them versus the other available. Roofing materials can hold you up a very long time, depending on petroleum costs and stuff like that.
How are these?
Ma'am?
How are these doing?
The TPO and PVC? I mean, you're gonna have maintenance on them, but in general, you, most of these roofs, you'll get a 20-year warranty with them. So your plan approach is, is that at year 15, 16, 17, we already know that roof needs to be replaced, and we start putting it into the capital outlay to have it replaced. You have your average maintenance cost that goes along with each one of these roofs. Any other questions?
What's the urgency on the roofs? Because it looks like, according to the presentation, like West Stanley and North Stanley are in a pretty dire situation. Obviously, you've got DPI working on the design approval for West Stanley, but I ballparked over $28 million.
Correct.
And roofing.
Correct.
Here. But it looks like some of these are urgent at the high school level.
Correct. Some of them are urgent. We have active leaks in our schools right now. My guys do a great job with it, trying to keep up with them. Storms come, makes it tough. But the urgency, I would, I would suggest that the urgency of getting these roofs replaced is in the very near future. But my suggestion to start with would be for us to entertain the idea of having a roofing audit done district-wide. And what that entails is, is so they take a core sample of the roof, we determine what materials are there, and they also, in that core sample, we can see the longevity left, the life left in that individual roof. Then it puts you on a rotation. They can help spell out that rotation, how many years, we need to project the amount of money for each year, for 10 years of what we need to spend. So you're looking at a $28 million total, just a guess. I would say we need a commitment of $5 million, easy, a year to handle what we have there. And that only puts us in a five-year rotation. So that's a guess. But I would lean heavily on a roofing consultant firm to help us with that.
Mr. Benton?
Yes, ma'am.
My mind is going to all the storm damage.
Yes, ma'am.
Over the last week. And do you expect that to be an issue if we start trying to get folks to repair these roofs? That they will be busy in other areas?
They will be very busy. These big contractors that handle jobs like this, they're gonna be very busy. There is a fear factor, you're gonna pay very premium price.
That's what I was worried about.
Yes, ma'am. A full roof audit will take us six to eight months to conduct, so it will take some time.
I got a real quick question.
Yes, sir.
Specific, the ridge cap on the metal roof at Aquadale, do we have that ridge cap on the way, or what?
We are.
That leak's continued?
It's continued. We have chased the leak to narrow down the spots that it is, but we are ordering a ridge cap to go on that roof.
My question is, the secondary question is, that roof ridge cap was not big enough to start with, or was poorly designed, or what?
Well, it could have been, it could have been big enough to start with. It could have been a poor design. That metal's gonna shrink, contract, back and forth constantly, and it can get to a point to where it won't do it anymore. And so I would lean more towards that the ridge cap was installed too short. Yes, ma'am.
Could you possibly send all this stuff to the commissioners? Please?
If y'all request that, then we will move forward with it.
I don't see an issue with that, if the majority of the board would like this forward at all.
I think we're gonna have to, because I'm just over here crunching numbers.
This is ridiculous.
You know, just a ballpark estimate, like for West Stanley, for example, it's over $2 million. So we're sort of back to, we're gonna start pouring millions of dollars into the facilities that are really old.
Correct.
Well, I'm sitting here thinking.
We only got $4 million in capital. That's really just not gonna get it done to tackle all of these dire situations.
And I'm thinking, you know, he's saying he's wanting to really do a roof audit to see kinda where we are, and if we're six months out, and everybody else is rebuilding homes and roofs six months from now, we're gonna be way further than six months out.
Yes, ma'am.
And these ones that are not looking very well right now are gonna be looking even worse.
And some of the issues at Albemarle High School, I'll just reference it, is the amount of the trees in the front of the school. They are very nice. The amount of leaf litter that they create on our roof creates a major, major problem. Not only that, limb breaks, it goes through our foam roof. So, you know, we can go and trim the trees back, but that one limb, once we cut it, there's five limbs. So you, five times the amount of leaves. So we need to do some serious thinking of the future of what we want to do in that area.
West Stanley High School, don't you already have that, aren't you gonna put that under contract soon?
Yes, sir.
Without having the consultants look at it?
No, it's already been looked at by the consultants. They did a core on it, so we know each layer, roof layer that is in there. We went all the way to the decking on it. For the main office, the auditorium area, and the gymnasium, all that will be replaced at one time. We thought that there might be an opportunity to seam them together between the old foam roof and the new TPO we're gonna put in. But there's no warranty on that joint. They won't even offer me one. No contractor will. So with that being said, the smart thing to do is to do it all at one time over that entire area, one roof system, and have it on the same year warranty.
Once we get through with West Stanley, what would be the next school that you think would be in line, that would need, that would need a new roof at that point?
I'm gonna say, once we get through with West Stanley, we really need to look hard at moving over to Millport. We don't have a lot of roof leaks there, but that roof is showing some deterioration pretty significantly. We have areas we need to address at Locust. We can't continue replacing sealant tile and letting, letting it keep infiltrating our building. It's, so, it's tough to determine without a real professional suggestion. We have areas at our middle schools that are leaking on the face of the gym. That was a very poor design. My guys have done a great job in years past trying to keep it out, but now we're to a point of where we need to address the issue and fix it. We had nine trashcans just down the hallway at West Stanley Middle in preparation for Friday.
Are all of our roofs foam roofs?
A big portion of them. We do have some TPO roof. You have a TPO roof at Richfield that was recently installed, great roof system. You have one version of a TPO roof in the Mass Science Building at the front of West Stanley High. And you have some metal roofs district-wide. You get into Albemarle Middle, and you go to Aquadale, there's some metal there, there's some TPO there. There's only one foam roof. So, I mean, it's kinda scattered, but you have a heavy volume of foam roofs.
And I believe you mentioned to me that the foam roof actually holds water in the foam. When it rains, we have water sitting on, in the foam, weighing down the roof.
Well, all it is, is a big sponge, just like you have in your house when you wash your dishes. Once that foam, the sponge gets infiltration in it, it holds water, sits there. Then if, if, if the roof is holding significant amount of water in the foam, there's some infrastructure issues that could occur if we're not proactive and get on it very fast.
And this has been the method of fixing roofs, I guess, in the county, just due to budgetary concerns?
Correct.
Over the last, maybe 20 years?
That, that's what I would, I would say, that more than likely, it was just budgetary items to get issues tried to take care of as fast as we can. They're just not long-term fixes. Foam, foam is not.
Mr. Benton, you said that it would be six months or more to do the audit. Do you know what the cost of that might be, or rough cost of it?
A rough cost of the full building audit would, would be roughly around $100,000. That'll be for every single building this district owns. So it would be roughly 100 grand.
Okay, thank you.
For each building?
No, sir, that's full district.
Okay.
Then, and what that $100,000 would purchase for us is a, is a, is a, they would go in and analyze each roof, and they would put it in a folder for us, and they would give their estimated longevity of the roof, when it needs to be replaced, maintenance cost. A full building audit like I've done in the past is pretty, it's very helpful on a maintenance end for us. We know the reoccurring cost. We have the warranties, we know when all that's gonna happen. So a full building audit's definitely the way to go.
For us to get started with this, since it seems rather urgent to me with the discussion that we've had, what, what do you need, like, from the board? Is this something that needs to come out of facilities committee that we bring before the board? Or can we just do something tonight with a recommendation for Mr. Benton to go ahead and be looking at and auditing?
Do you have any formal pricing from any?
I do have a formal pricing from one that was dated to me, and that I'd started looking at these roofs January 10th. I would have to check to make sure that pricing is still good.
Yeah, let's do that. Let's have, collect a little more information and send it through facilities.
Yeah, I would, I would like for you guys to take that up a minute, come out a committee back to the board if that, if that works for you.
And, and, and just, just for talking points is, in this audit, I could as well include our rooftop units of having them analyzed as well. Of course, you have to pay for it, but it will give you the longevity of your rooftop units and just for, for your knowledge on your end.
You say units, you mean like the HVAC?
HVAC, HVAC, A units, yes, sir.
Dustin, your own finance, but I think that would be beneficial to go ahead and have all of that information at one time so that we can start to plan for the long-term future plans of repair.
Use of taxpayer resources when we've identified what needs are, and we have a very narrow scope of study, like we've done with Numerex and the demographer, the updates this year. So, you know, we obviously have some roofing needs that we're aware of, and it's, I think, worth spending the money to assess what needs it now and how we can ask for funding on that.
Agree.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Benton?
Yes, ma'am.
If you don't mind staying up here, I think in lieu of everything that you've shared, it really brings to, to my attention. I want, I want a little bit of, I guess, discussion and an understanding here, and a real understanding with the public, and I hope that people who are watching this will get the understanding about the needs-based capital grant. So much of what you're talking about here can fall into our needs-based grant. But I've had people who have reached out to me, and especially it's the people in the western end of the county, West Stanley Middle School, knowing that they are, they are going to need that addition, knowing that we need to expand the whole parking area out there, and a lot of that is for safety purposes as well. This is why the needs-based grant is so, is so important. I wanna run through with the board just a timeline, and I think the board may have some questions for Dr. Dennis, as well as even for you, Mr. Benton. But for the board to understand, Dr. Dennis emailed the county manager, Andy Lucas, on August the 19th this year, 2024, with the information that was needed for the grant application. Mr. Lucas denied pursuing that grant in his email. There was a correspondence.
It was a copy of the grant application, yes. A blank one, yes.
Okay. A joint facilities and commissioner meeting was scheduled, okay? And it was, it was scheduled earlier, but due to some things here with Hope and her mother, we rescheduled that joint meeting for September the 6th. So it's just been recently. During that meeting, and all of us have notes about this, during this meeting, there was a great, enormous discussion about the grant information, the details and the deadline for that grant, the needs-based grant, that it had to be turned in by September the 13th, 2024. We discussed in that meeting the loss of a grant priority ranking with DPI if Stanley County Schools did not submit an application. If I remember correctly, and I've talked this over with Mr. Lisk, we were in a queue, and we were in a queue somewhere. and we were in a queue somewhere that upper 40 range. I want to say it was like 47th or something like that in a queue.
They dropped us out of queue a year or so ago.
All right, but that was?
Yes, at one point we were.
Yes. So to get back into that queue, we needed to do that grant, the needs-based grant application.
That was the commissioners' committee on September the 6th.
Yes. And what I have had posed to me was, and we all know here, the commissioners approved the West Stanley Middle School addition in 2022 on our needs-based application, but denied it now for 2024. I want the board to understand that. We discussed in that meeting three-year waiting period for the next grant opportunity. Basically, that was what it would end up being, like a three-year period if we just did not follow through with this grant application.
Well, if we, to clarify that point, Mrs. Gibson, if we were to get awarded, say, like a West Stanley Middle School addition, then we're taken off the list.
Yes.
We no longer have.
Right.
The committee felt that that was a smaller project relative to the other needs that our board may feel we should go after the larger money.
Right, okay.
And just one more clarifying point. If we were awarded and for some reason it did not work out, we could always revert it back, correct?
We have 24, we have 24.
24 months, okay. I just, I want the public to understand that. And also, Ms. Gibson, I want the public to understand that when we're saying needs-based grants, the county is paying a 5% match. It is not the entire amount, it's only 5% of the amount of the grant awarded.
A lottery.
Yes, okay.
I think they need to understand too that we actually gave the commissioners four applications, one for a new Oakboro Elementary School, one for an addition to West Stanley Middle School, and then one each for two different high schools. So there was a total of four grant applications that were given to the commissioners for their approval.
So they could have à la carte, pick and chose, or accept it all. Okay, thank you.
And since we're going back to, well, the fact that we had those four, I know in speaking with you, and this was brought out in our joint meeting with the three commissioners, it was brought out that for West Stanley Middle School addition, that it would probably cost around $12.5 million.
Yes, ma'am.
Which would leave the commissioners with a cost of around $625,000. And that's all.
Correct.
To the taxpayer.
To the taxpayer.
Taxpayer would only have to pay the 5% and then the state return of the lottery proceeds would fund the rest of that.
Now, could you even estimate, because we were awarded, well, not awarded, they signed off on this in 2022 for the West Stanley Middle School addition. I'm just wondering what that cost, do you even know like what an estimated cost might have been for West Stanley addition in 2022?
I can give you rough square footage price. And a rough square footage price in 2022, most of that stuff was about $250 a square foot at that time. Of course, it goes along with the furnishes that you finish it, but in general, it was $250 a square foot in 2022, probably.
So, Mr. Lisk, you doing that math for me?
It depends on significantly less than...
Than the $12.5 million that it's going to cost.
Yes, when you go to the Department of Public Instruction and you look in this readily available public information and you look at buildings built since, I think they go back to 2010, you see it was in the hundreds and now we're in the 400s. So it's only gone up. It's the rate of that growth has varied, and obviously we've been through a high inflationary period. It hasn't gone back down. It's only gone up and the cost of a lot of this construction and our needs here far exceeded our revenue growth as a county through tax revenue.
And just one more clarifying point, just for the public in general, these funds go out regardless of how many schools kind of apply for them or not, correct? Like they award a certain amount, a dollar amount?
It's a great question because Superintendent Truitt, North Carolina State Superintendent Truitt, she is, has been delegated some responsibility on how, from the state congress on how to divvy that money. And so one of the ways that we were told on all the calls that she would determine how they get that is looking at what kind of money can your, if you raise taxes one penny in your county, what does that generate in revenue? And here, I think the last report showed about $724,000 for our county. I'm sure it's probably a little higher now, plus or minus. So they were giving it to, initially to a lot of tier-one schools. And you got to remember, if you're the person asking, well, how come we never get any of our lottery proceeds back, well, you didn't really for about the first 15 or 20 years, but in recent years, this program was developed and we've been trying to work with our commissioners to get them to apply for this and develop a plan where we can have things like that applied for. So they went to tier-one schools, schools, systems, counties that could generate maybe 50,000 worth of tax revenue. But they are making their way up. But again, by not applying, to Mrs. Gibson's point earlier, we pulled off of that ranking list. And Mr. Bowers was here at the time as Facilities Director. I vaguely recall they, and I'm sure it's publicly available data, there was 30 or 40 projects chosen that year. You know, the rules have changed slightly on how they were going to do that, whether it's going to be small projects or large projects, but we were in line and you don't know which one they're going to choose. Indy was part of that and the commissioners decided that they would go ahead and do Indy and that was fantastic. But again, to your point, here we are again with West Stanley Middle. We know that Numerex is looking at all sorts of redistricting options and how we could alleviate that, but at the end of the day, it's going to be very minimal impact. We're going to have to have that addition. So the taxpayer has missed this opportunity to at least save millions of dollars.
And just one more thing, there is a set amount of money that is set aside to be divvied out of this lottery money each grant cycle, correct?
Correct. And it's, they have a formula like they do for many things, and it's ranged around 274 to, you know, $300 million, plus or minus. But that goes across 115 school districts.
But if you don't apply, you know, you're not going to get it.
You don't apply, you don't get it. And I believe, Dr. Dennis, if I remember correctly, your largest school district, so I think, I believe it's the top six, like a Union or Charlotte Meck are excluded from this program.
Yes. You're larger, you're larger in your tier three.
Exactly, yep.
And I think what we were hearing also, and all of this again was brought out when we met our committee with the three commissioners, that at first we were just seeing the money go into like your tier one. Now we were starting to see that money go to your tier two, and we are a tier-two county. So when we looked at especially two, we had four, but when we've talked about the addition to West Stanley Middle School, and it's inevitable, I think that's going to be something that this board is going to be looking at very soon, just like we're talking about roofs. It's very soon that we're going to have to do this, that addition. Then looking at a brand-new elementary in that western end, which we have the land and we talked about, that would be Oakboro, and we know Oakboro needs replacing that The last cost that you had was around 44 million to build that school.
And I have, as of 5/1 of 23, there was multiple elementary schools bid at a 750-capacity school, and they bid for $465 a square foot. So at a 750-capacity school, that's about 85,000 square feet. So you can do the math on it, it's roughly 40 million, 42 million, something like that.
Okay, so somewhere between that 40 and 44 million.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, ranging there. Again, with the match from commissioners, taxpayers would be looking at 2.1 million.
We know that from the studies that we've ordered, that we have crowding on the western end, and obviously the facility's old, but that a district, a school in Oakboro would alleviate a lot of the issues that we have out there. And that was also noted back in several other studies that were completed by this county.
Those studies were ordered by us, but also recommended by commissioners, correct?
Yeah, we ordered the 2023 study, but that was in agreement with the commissioner board and the commissioner committee that we would look at the demographics and then, of course, this board has ordered further updates to 2024.
Thank you.
And then if we talk about the high schools, especially if we talked about a high school where we were to have land available, okay, there at the high school. And I believe that in talking with you, that we might be looking at a capacity of 1,600, something like that.
That's what our goal was shooting for.
All right. Having the land, that's a big part of it. So we were looking at being able to build for 95 million, okay, somewhere around there. Again, that leaves your taxpayer with 33 million, being able to get the matching, okay, fund from commissioners.
If I may just interrupt you real quick, on 6/13 of 2024, Alle Gany High School bid, and it come in at $412 a square foot, that's 170,000 square foot building.
And as a reference point to that, because I personally looked, I believe it was Montgomery County when they opened in 2020, it's posted on DPI's website, their cost was around $285 a square foot at that time.
Yes, sir.
I think what, in my talking with some neighboring counties as well, it's disturbing that we did not go after the needs-based grant money. Because for what, Dr. Dennis, and even before you were here, we were applying for these, even before you were here, and, you know, we were getting told pretty much it's going to go to those tier-one counties, it's going to go to those low wealth counties. Your odds of getting the needs-based grant, okay, was not so high at that time. Then we started hearing, and from Catherine Truitt as well, the monies are going to your tier-two counties. So your tier-two counties are going to be receiving monies to build new schools, to build new additions. And I felt personally that out of these four needs-based grants that were submitted to the commissioners, I felt confident that one of them, that we would get, that we would be able to get the funding for, whether it was the West Stanley Middle, whether it was the new, brand-new elementary. And we know that in past with needs-based grants, that many times they are granted for brand-new buildings. But I felt, for the first time, I felt very confident that we would be able to get one of these. So I wanted to go back through and let the board know how that, how our timeline of our committee working with the commissioners, the three commissioners, they all had all the information that we have gone over here and that we've continually gone over. They all had this information at hand. And I know that, you know, they were requesting, we want this full-blown facilities study done. Well, you know, when we came back with a question of if we have a study done, a study which we felt like needed to be rather narrow in its scope, could you give us assurances that action would be taken from the study? And the commissioners gave us no assurances. I want this board to know that. No assurances were given to us.
None. And in fact, the county manager mentioned in that same meeting that, you know, referencing the Cleveland County study that had several hundred million dollars worth of a capital improvement plan, that here, the county would, anything at 60 million and above would go for a bond referendum. So we spent a lot of time talking about this capital needs-based grant, the deadline. They had questions on the priority, and their commissioner committee is Chairman Lawhan, Vice Chair Mike Barbie and Peter Ashudo. So the point of ordering a full-blown, let's look at every building again, when there's been no action taken on these buildings and going across the entire county to come up with several hundred million dollars that they aren't going to pay for now, and they're only going to kick it up to a vote, in 10 more years when they've not done anything, it's going to be drastically higher and it's a real waste of taxpayer resources. So just like this roofing study, or just like identifying Oakboro by the population forecast and the movements and the demographics, who've been pretty steady over the last 20 years since they've been completed. We've identified that we have a really old building structure in Oakboro and that we have a crowding population on that western end. And that that municipality has an SRO, they provide a police force, I know it's the county now, but that would fit very well. So the limited study, we're using the taxpayers' money more wisely and more fiscally responsibly than ordering a full-blown study on things that we're not even going to do. So yes, to your point, I was in there, they had every opportunity to ask all these questions. We discussed them and at the end of the day, they left the meeting saying that they were not going to fund these. Going back to August from the county manager, who got that information on the application and said, quote, they would be reluctant to, quote, "provide a commitment to any additional matching funds for large capital projects without a strategic and comprehensive capital improvement plan being completed similar to the one that was done for Cleveland County." So they were notified in August, it opened up in August, they were notified in August, they received the information. We scheduled a meeting, I believe it was August the 28th. Death in the Family Administration Leadership, the board had to attend, we rescheduled to September the 6th. We spent a couple hours in there, they even brought breakfast to us, and we talked about this deadline and talked about these plans, but they're stuck on the study. So the outcome of the September 6th joint committee meeting where we talked about the needs-based capital grants, we talked about our facilities plan was, they were going to go back to their board to determine, did they want to pay the full 100%? We talked about a narrow scope of study, that we're happy to work with them and work with the county and we're happy to look at information, but if you want a full-blown study, then you pay for it. We don't think we need a full-blown, we need to narrow it in scope.
And here is the other part of that, and during that meeting, we knew that the commissioners left with, they weren't going to sign off on any of these needs-based grants. However, as the three of us, and I think I speak for all of the board here, and as an educator and as parent, grandparent, grandparent of children in our system, for our educators that have reached out to me, for the, my neighbors that have reached out to me, many people in, again, the western end of the county, there was, there was no part of me that was going to let slip by the opportunity for us to apply for a needs-based grant and hope that we would get one of them, and in hopes that we would be able to... move ourself even up in the ranking even more or in a queue. But I could not do that. So we instructed, our board instructed, Dr. Dennis and Mr. Benton to put together, to do this application, to include what needed to be with the application. We instructed that because every single question that commissioners ask, every single question, every single discussion, we answered them, correct? Ms. Whitaker and Mr. List? We had already answered everything. So we instructed both of you to turn in. And I have been told, and I want both of you to know this, that I have been told our application and the attachment of the Numerex study with the population growth was excellent. It was excellent. Therefore, that also makes me feel like we very well might have received one of these. And we instructed Dr. Dennis. The commissioners wanted to, I think, maybe on a Friday or whatever it was to meet. Dr. Dennis, I believe you were in a conference. You had something that you could not meet.
Well, this is coming after the Friday meeting on September the 6th. And we felt as a committee and a board that it's incumbent upon us to be responsible for the taxpayer
That was what I was going to say.
And submit these applications, that it's our responsibility to go after this money. A general statute, the county is 100% responsible by North Carolina general statute to build and maintain these buildings. So two or three business days later, so it's Fridays. So we sent them information in August when it came out. We met with them in September the 6th, a Friday. That next Tuesday or Wednesday, the 10th or 11th, I think it was, September, we talked about the deadline with them of September 13th, it was that Friday. So they had a week. They had a week. And the chair of the board is in that meeting, who speaks for the board, that we sent them that application. They had no interest in those applications until they were actually sent.
Right.
The shock is not that they were surprised. The shock is that we actually sent it over.
Well, and I think I want to say on behalf of the board, I think the consensus from our board was we knew that they had told us no. But on behalf of our teachers, and I was going to say our taxpayers, because I'm not a former educator. But on behalf of all our taxpayers and all our stakeholders, we felt we needed to send the application, regardless of the fact whether they were going to take it up or not. That way, we did our due diligence in submitting what we knew we needed to have in that ranking and in that application process. And I'm proud of us for making that move and going ahead and doing that.
And we hope they reevaluate that decision. I mean, that's our intent, is that we work with that board to move forward this system. But we're not a taxing authority. We cannot generate money and revenue to pay for these things. That is their responsibility by North Carolina general statute.
And we are not allowed to formally submit without their signature of the 5% match. So we can submit it to them, but if they do not agree, we cannot submit for the grant.
Hope they reconsider.
Well, I hope, but, and I'm hoping that people who are tuned in or watching this have an understanding of the needs-based grant, how important that needs-based grant is. It's vital to your tier one and your tier two counties. And again, we would not be doing our due diligence at all if we had not have submitted these grant applications. And I don't know, I really personally do not know. My contacts with some other board members in other counties, I don't, I have not found anyone yet who is a tier one or tier two that's not submitting needs-based grants, except those who have already received them, and they're having to wait before they can, yes, a time period before they can resubmit or submit again for something. So what we're going to be able to see are counties around us, counties throughout the state of North Carolina, that when I hear people say, well, why can't we get that new elementary school? Or why could we not get an addition added on like such and such county? Well, I hope this explains to people as to, we tried. We will not give up trying. I feel like that's my responsibility on this board. But to the families, to those who reach out to me, especially from West Stanley Middle School about needing that addition, needing the expansion of the parking to enlarge all of that and to help with the traffic and the traffic flow and everything, this would have helped tremendously with that. I do want to say that I know that you and Dr. Dennis worked extremely hard on these grant applications. And again, I wanted you to know that I have received word that they were excellently done. And the attachments that you had with the Numerex study and everything was pertinent. And it was there, and that was what was needed. I wanted to bring all that to the board because I wanted the board to have an understanding of how this whole timeline had taken place. And I think that's it. Mr. Benton, I know you've been involved with these needs-based grants before.
Yes, yeah, I've seen counties apply for them and talked with counties that have applied for them. Some of them have been very successful. And they've been able to build the buildings. It's a good opportunity to get significant funds very fast and get you started in the correct direction.
Yes. And Mr. List, when you say, we hope they reevaluate, well, we still have to, they can't reevaluate right now. I mean, it has to be a year.
Yeah, I mean, the deadline has been pretty much the last three cycles, I believe, '23, '24, and then what would be '25. And let's say change is roughly the same September deadline. But a whole lot has changed.
And I kind of want to speak to that for a second because I was on facilities before I got in this position. And Ms. Whitaker, I hope that when we go to conference in November, you will go in there and see the new schools that have gotten their grants and see the ones that had theirs completed last year because we've seen those for the past few years. But when we're talking timeline and we're talking August 19th, we're really not talking August 19th. We're talking 2022. Because we had these discussions prior to 2022. This process, for the most part, hasn't changed drastically since then. And they signed off on these in 2022. And, you know, not to beat around the bush or, you know. But we've been at this for years. This is not, this was not a new, it was familiar. Or it should have been familiar. And some of the faces that were in that room with you guys were the faces that were in the room with us in 2022 because I was in there. So the process should not have been shocking, I don't think at all, to that group. Hadn't changed a whole lot, maybe one or folks or so in or out on their committee. But so I want the public to understand that we have been at this. And I know you guys did new applications, and some were the same project, some were a little different. But the process has not changed drastically since it started, correct?
That is correct. I mean, they-
No, the application's pretty much the same.
Yeah, and you're exactly correct. I mean, this board, Dr. Lefler, Mrs. Poplin, and we were on the facilities committee when I came on this board. And those conversations haven't drastically changed. I mean, there are lots of opinions, obviously, and there's different ways that the problems can be solved. But at the end of the day, there's just not action being taken. And that's been the problem. A large study in '05, no action taken. Very minimal, I think. I think it was locust addition at the time, which came in '09. 2015, a Cliff Notes version of the large study and no action taken. Out of our committee, we ordered Numerex with the commissioner committee at the time, the demographic study, because we wanted to see the population shifts. Where, there's, and we've gotten Indy, and that's great. But we have lots of needs across the county. And we're going to have to raise, or are going to have to vote on it for large needs. But we've got to go for the grants for the taxpayers.
And I think in our facilities committee meeting, which I'm assuming we'll be having one very soon with the roofing audit and everything that we're needing to do. But I think we are going to have to also really move forward with an addition onto West Stanley Middle and the expansion out there. And I think that's something that we have got to continue in our facilities discussion. It's inevitable that we have to do.
That's one thing we need for the public to really understand is how our capital outlay projects are funded. And because we do not have any tax levelling authority, that has to come from our county commissioners. They hold the purse strings, unfortunately. This board has no control of that. I heard Ms. Gibson make the comment that she could not, as a board member, sit by and let the opportunity of applying for the grants pass by. Then I heard Mr. List say that the taxpayers had lost the opportunity. The truth is that the commissioners took that opportunity from us. They could have signed off on one of those applications. They could have signed off on any of them, all four. But when they did not sign any, we basically lost the opportunity to apply for those grants. We were doing things to help the taxpayers and to help them. This is free money that comes from the state that they only match a 5% to. And that opportunity for us has gone for another year. If you were looking at Keith's slideshow, we don't have a year for some of our roofs. We don't have a year for West Stanley Middle School. It's busting at the seams. So it's a lost opportunity. It's a lost opportunity for us. It's a lost opportunity for our county, for our students. And I guess a lost opportunity for our commissioners.
I think it's-
Mrs. Whitaker, and sorry, Mrs. Poplin. I want to add this point. The board did offer, prior to deadline, and the email exchange with the county manager and Dr. Dennis, but the board offered a joint meeting. We can discuss all these things. Again, we just discussed them with the commissioner committee. It's been ongoing, but we offered a joint meeting. They turned that down.
I was going to say that was declined, was my understanding. I just want to say, I agree, Ms. Whitaker. I think it's sad in general that it was not taken up and at least supplied for with the 5% match. But it's very sad for our students because, like we alluded to in that work session, we're having to take small bites of that pie because we don't have the funding to go out and fix every building. I wish we did. I wish we could take all these roofs that you just showed us and go put new roofs on and have our kids walking under awnings in the dry and not replacing roof tiles, our ceiling tiles. But we don't have the luxury of that. And so this would have really helped us take a piece of that pie out for a very small amount on the taxpayer. And who ends up really hurting in the end are our students. And it's sad.
And I don't think we ever said what the actual dollar maximum amount that they would give for each grant for elementary schools. It was 42 million. For middle schools, it was 52 million. And for a high school, it was 62 million.
Thank you. And I want to say thank you to that finance and facilities committee too, and to Mr. Benton and Dr. Dennis. And I hope helped a little bit on those grants.
She helped a lot.
Um, Mr. Benton said she helped a lot. But I know you guys worked hard on getting those shored up. And it sounds like you did a really good job on that. And I appreciate that. And we're working hard to get the things that we feel we need for our students and the taxpayers and our stakeholders. And I would just hope that, like Mr. List said, that they would reevaluate and take another look and maybe not be a no in the very beginning. Because that's what it felt like to me, and that's just my personal opinion. But when, you know, that came out and was like, we're not going to address this at all, that feels like a no. And you feel like you get shut down, even though we're trying very hard to make big gains for small amounts for our taxpayers without having to go to that vote. And to get shut down, I just felt it was a sad day. It was a sad day for our students. That's really all I have to say.
And a lost opportunity for the taxpayer. Again, I think Mrs. Whitaker and Mrs. Gibson said that.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Benton. Mr. Benton, thank you. And your department for, you know, all that you are doing. I know that you had shown us, I think, previously all the work that you had done over the summer months and still continuing to do improvements in our schools. And I just want you and your whole department to know that you're very much appreciated.
And thank y'all for all your support. We appreciate it very much.
Okay, since we amended our, thank you, Mr. Benton.
Thank y'all, we appreciate it.
I think you're done right now. Since we amended our agenda, we're trying to get back on track here. So next up is, we're skipping back to G now for the NC SBA voting delegates for 2024. Hope has let me know that there are only four delegates signed up to attend the conference at this point. So unless there is other interest in attending, we are allowed to submit four names. So there really would be no need in voting. We would have four.
So who's going? I know that I'm going.
Myself, Ms. Whitaker.
I'm planning to go, but don't count me in for the delegate.
Okay. And Ms. Watson.
Okay.
So I-
Just so she has our names then.
Yes, and I think the rules changed this year. Hope, I'm going to defer to you because I know you were on that call. So to add Mr. List as an alternate, he would have to submit now. Is that correct? Correct. So I wanted you to be aware of that, Mr. List. If you're not down as an alternate, this is their new ruling. They had a call that me and Hope got on and several emails. If you wish to step into that room where delegates are voting, even if you are an alternate, in case one of us gets sick or has to step out, you have to commit prior to the conference. I will leave that up to you at this point.
Aside now.
I think we have to submit this form. But if you're on as an alternate, you can go in, but you do not have to vote.
Okay, thank you. Yes, that's fine.
Okay. So Hope, I think we're fine without an actual vote. Okay, thank you. Next up, we have committee reports and first to have facilities with Ms. Whitaker.
We've talked an awful lot about facilities tonight, so here we go again. I just wanted to kind of touch on some things that have gone on over the last couple weeks, month, I guess, for facilities. We have purchased a new building that will be our new central office. It is at 723 Aquadel Road in Alamo World. Basically, for the last 20-plus years, we have leased the current office space at the Commons from the county. We were currently paying them $90,000 annually for lease on that building. We basically, as a committee and as a board, we had, prior to that, directed Dr. Dennis to start looking for some commercial property. Commercial property is really hard to find in this county. Commercial property is really hard to find in this county, but he basically had been looking, and we had looked at this, this property, and so it was sort of a lengthy process to get to where we were able to purchase that. But basically, I wanted to kind of hit some of the things that basically you probably saw printed in the SNAP or online on Facebook for Stanley News &amp; Press. There was a little confusion to start with, because the initial headline said that we had purchased land, and we were gonna build a new central office. That was not the case. The headline was a little misleading, but I will tell you that I contacted Charles from the SNAP and asked him, could they make a change to that headline, that I didn't feel like that that was very accurate to the article, and they did do that, so I'm very appreciative of that, because it was very misleading for the public. But basically, we just decided that because we were paying $90,000 a year lease on that building, which by the way, originally started 20-plus years ago at only a dollar a year, we actually did find the lease for that, that was dated July 1st of 2003, where we would pay $1 for the lease of the building. So it went from $1 to $90,000 annually. Some of the reasons that we decided to look for a new facility was basically because of, basically it was cost savings for us, it was gonna be a long-term investment for us. We wouldn't be paying a lease, we would be building equity in a building, and it would give us, you know, allow us to kind of manage our resources more effectively. It basically gave us some more control over the building. This building does come with about five acres of land, so it, it, it does give us room to grow way down the road, not anything in the near future. And basically, it was just more efficient overall. We, our commissioners seemed to be a little surprised at the purchase of the building. I did go back to our joint meeting that we had with them in May, on May 8th. We actually had a conversation with them at our joint meeting about us looking for a facility. Mr. Lawhan asked us, were we looking for a facility? And Dr. Dennis said yes, he had been instructed to look for some commercial property. We basically had a conversation in that meeting about us having to take care of the maintenance and other items that needed to be done to the building. If HVAC went out, we had to replace it. We basically told him the hot water had, heater had been out, and we were told by Mr. Lucas that they would cover those things, but they had never been informed that there were issues. We did have some problems with something after that, where we sent an email, an HVAC, where we sent an email to Mr. Lucas that I think was forwarded on to their maintenance director, and we were told that it was not their responsibility. So it was a little contradicting there as to what they were responsible for doing and what they were, or were not gonna do. We did make it clear to them that it, you know, it didn't have anything to do with the square footage of the building as to why we were looking for something else, but more to do with the way our bill, current building is set up. If you've ever been in there, you know it's cubicles. There are very few office, privacy, private offices there, so had to do more with just being in a building that, where there were more privacy, and we didn't have people who were sharing, sharing spaces. You need that in certain departments, because things are confidential, so we, we felt like that this building was well-suited for that. We are excited for our central office staff. It is a small step, but it is a step in the right direction, and I think that's what this board is gonna have to continue to do, is to make steps, whether they're small steps, we do know we're gonna have to push, and I think this board is committed to doing that. So I am, I am pleased that we will be able to make this move. I think it's, like I say, definitely a step in the right direction for us. And I appreciate the Facility Committee. This committee has, we've worked extremely hard this past year, but I feel like we've accomplished, along with the board, so much. You know, I feel like we sat stagnant for a while, but we have a new addition going in at Indy, that I don't know if the walls are going up yet, but I know you told us last time they, they were closed, so that's good. So I'm excited about that, and then with the new building for our central office to be located, it's small baby steps, but we'll take them.
Oh, and Ms. Whitaker, I just want to say thank you one more time for helping me take lead a little bit on that building with, I had some medical stuff over the summer, and I kind of handed that off to Facilities Committee, and Ms. Whitaker did a great job with that, and so thank you, and thank you to Mark for helping us with that, that acquisition, so thank you. Next, we have Finance with Mr. Lisk.
Thank you, Mrs. Poplin, Madam Chair. We had no Finance Committee meeting for the month, but I do have some information that, that I did want to share to the public. I'll, I'll piggyback off of, of Mrs. Whitaker and, and this purchase of the county office as this, this notion that Stanley County Schools receives a budgeted allocation from the county in funding of $90,000, so in other words, they're beefing us up $90,000, and that this money is restricted specifically for lease of, of this building. I'm gonna read to you a June 18th email from the county manager, Andy Lucas, to our CFO, Mr. Dudley, and to our superintendent, Dr. Dennis, and this specifies out what the budget allocations are that they give to us. And by, to give you some relevancy as I, as I read it, there's unrestricted money, meaning that money coming in can be used for whatever it needs to be used, and that is funded from the county. Additional funding from the county can be restricted and is restricted for things like teacher supplements, or for school debt service, or certain capital outlay or capital projects. All state funding has pretty much restrictions and general statutes with it, so the only unrestricted money we get is from the county. But, Dr. Dennis and Terry, I'm gonna read the email verbatim. Below, please find the fiscal year 2425 adopted budget allocation for the Stanley County School System. Current expense, $14,625,360. Article 44 sales tax noted as an additional current expense of $875,000. Current expense is a sort of an edgy word here, a county word, to mean that this is unrestricted money given to the school system to use however they need to. It supplements the school system. It can pay for teacher, teachers' salaries, it can be used for capital, it can be used for about anything, because it's unrestricted. So that's the first two line items, is current expense to bulk of it, 14.6 million, another 875, which is estimated, if you read the county's fiscal year-end reports, they estimate what they're gonna generate out of Article 44 sales tax, and that's how they allocate that to the school system. That's unrestricted money can be used for anything. The next line item is a teacher supplement grant of $1 million. We asked for 8%, I think they originally gave us a half a million dollars, they came back and gave us another half a million, so total of 1 million. Now, that 1 million can't be used for anything, because they have, under general statute, the right and by law, the ability to restrict that money, and in this case, a million dollars is restricted for teacher supplement grants, and it says, noted from the county manager, cannot supplant. Board of County Commissioners wants to ensure additional funding increases, the supplement for teachers, which it did. Thank you. The next line item, budget allocation from the county managers, the Indy School Project for $3.7 million. The next is capital outlay, 4.515 million dollars, and capital outlay means that the school system can use that for anything that has an asset tag. So when you think about Chromebooks, or you think about Indy, or you think about the roofs, the painting, all the needs that we have, we, we just talked about over $28 million worth of roofing projects, we've got 4.15 million to spend, all right? The last line item is school debt service, principal and interest for roughly $684,000 of principal and about $42,000 of interest. What you didn't hear me say was that there was a budget allocation of $90,000 for lease income. So what does that mean? That means, just like every other person that goes to work earns a living, they earn money, it's unrestricted, they can spend it on whatever they want, but they gotta live somewhere. Hopefully, they do, that they're gonna pay the lease, they're gonna pay the mortgage. So out of that, this school system has a almost $90,000 lease agreement that has expired, but we're paying $90,000 as an expense. That's $90,000 that beefs up these numbers I'm gonna give you, that you can go find on Department of Public Instruction, but nowhere did we have any restriction, or was there any beef up of $90,000 budgeted specifically for this line item? So it's an expense to the school system, much like your mortgage or rent is an expense to you. You go to work, you made money, you paid your bills, you hopefully you have some left over and you save some money. That's, that's how it operates. So the notion that we are getting some specific money for this rental, for this lease is infactual, publicly available information.
Mr. Lisk, just one point to that. That is also in the portion of the budget that we have to share with our public charter school, correct?
That is correct. Every dollar that comes in through the county to the school system, there's a percentage, I want to say, is it 10, yup, out of current.
Out of current expense, which is the, the pot we're talking about.
Is basically, as I understand it, is a per pupil allotment.
Yes.
Given to every charter student in the county.
Yes, well, any, any student, any student from our county that goes to a public charter, we have to turn around and pay that allotment, but a percentage of that 90,000 is in that same pot, so technically, we're not even getting the whole 90,000 to pay back to the county, because we have to share it with, with the other.
That's exactly right, but it's unrestricted money by general statute, unrestricted, had no restriction, no budget allocation, is money given to supplement. Now, now that you heard, it sounds like a lot of really big numbers. Let me break that down for you. Everyone can go that has computer access, and if you don't, please let us know, we'll show you. Find some way for you to view this information, but it is readily available on the Department of Public Instruction. Now, I'm gonna give it to you, where you can actually go visit it, and I'll, I'll kind of guide you through verbally how to go if you're listening to it or you're replaying this. You can also go onto the Facebook post from Stanley County Schools, I think it was last week, it was a little after our work session, but the actual links are there, where you can view where we rank in the state in our local funding from the county. Not only can you view it as the latest school year provided, which is 2022, 23, and 3, you can go back all the way to 2003, in which I did. We, there are 115 school districts in this state, 100 counties, 115 school districts. When you think about our size, we think about Stanley County being rural, and we are, but as far as the number of students go, out of 115 school districts, we rank 41st, so we're nearly in the top third in the state as far as the number of students we have. Yet, the latest ranking that comes out from the Department of Public Instruction, and, you know, if you're not familiar with that, that's who sort of regulates education, public education in North Carolina, their computer systems sync up with our computer systems, and so they get to see every dollar that passes through. This is not self-reported, it's not made up, it is through the computer. Money comes in throughout the year, it's picked up, they evaluate it for all their, all their districts. So as of 2022, 2023, we're almost in the top third as far as the number of students go, yet we rank 105th out of 115 school districts. That's in the bottom 10% of the state. When we combine state and local funding, we rank 112th out of 115 school districts, meaning that of all funding sources that Stanley County receives, our system, being almost in the top third in size by number of students, ranks in the bottom 3% in funding. We're in the bottom 10% as funded by our county commissioners. Now, I'm gonna go back here, and I did a 10-year average. Now, you can go, that takes us back to about 2013, 2014, where 89th, 94th, 86th, 100th, 110th back in 2017, 2018, almost last, 96th, 100, 93, 99. So I averaged those, and barring a mistake in my math, I come up with a 10-year average ranking, annualized ranking of 97th. And 10-year average annualized ranking of all combined funding sources, state, local, and federal, 101st, meaning that we're in the bottom 13% of combined funding as a 10-year average for per people. Now, that's unrestricted money, that's restricted money, that's everything coming in. If I go back for all the combined funding, seven of those 10 years, we spent at the back of the pack, 70% of the time. Now, it wasn't always like that, because in 2000, and you can go back to 2003 on this data, in '05, '06, we had a rank of, this is again, local funding to the, to the school system, had a rank of 57th out of 115 school districts in the state. What you'll see, if you choose to go look through that data, is a pretty steady decline, and it happened pretty quickly, there, pretty quick year there that it jumped down into the 80s and just never came back up. So when you hear this school system, my committee, our CFO, our superintendent talk about funding, that's what we're talking about. Costs have gone up, we're almost in the top third in size, yet we fund in the, the bottom 3% to the bottom 13% of all combined sources. Now, I'm gonna go jump again off of Mrs. Whitaker's, gosh, the capital outlay and facilities, could not think of the word, facilities. You can also look on this, this, this website, and again, I'm gonna give you the website here at the end, but there's a capital outlay ranking, and it does its own five-year average in the ranking. The first one was in Table 24, per people expenditure ranking, including child nutrition. Remember, child nutrition works like a business, they cap it at about 10% profit, but it includes that enterprise revenue in there. Table 29, final average daily membership, that's a fancy word to say, how many students do you got? Total, total per people expenditures and capital outlay. You can sort by the, you know, the, the name of the county, or the LEAs they call it, you can sort by the ranking, you know, I would suggest sorting by the, the name of the county, so you can see, pop up, because all you gotta do is sort it, and we come up last. But as of the latest school year, 2022, 2023, when you think about capital outlay funding, again, this is money that goes to build schools, it renovates schools, it fixes roofs, and we've got all these roofs across the county that need to be replaced. It, it's anything that ha, can have an asset tag, it has to be used for those purposes. Generally speaking, facilities and maintenance. We rank as a five-year rolling average 85th out of 115 school districts, or the bottom 26% for capital outlay funding. Again, we rank 41st out of 115 school districts, or the top 35% in the number of students we have. Now, you're asking, well, okay, well, we're near the last, but we're a small county, maybe we just can't afford it. I'm myth-busting here tonight. If you go to northcarolinaforum.org and you look at, I'll go ahead and give you this one, I'll come back to the other two, www.northcarolina, it's NC, www.ncforum, which is spelled F-O-R-U-M dot org, forward slash L, as in Larry, S as in Sam, F as in Frank, S as in Sam, forward slash. This is the Public School Forum of North Carolina, nonpartisan institution located in Raleigh that studied local funding for more than 30 years. Go to that website, click County Profiles, right there off the homepage. Select Stanley County from the drop-down box under Select County, which is right at the top of that page. You're gonna see that as of the 2021, 2022 school year, that we ranked 59th out of 115 districts, and our ability to pay per ADM or per student. So our ability to fund as a taxpaying county in this state, out of 115 school districts, ranks 59th, yet we fund as of the same school year, 21, 22, we were at 89th, and the next year at 105th, and a rolling, or a 10-year annualized average of 97th. So we're in the bottom, I mean, not even bottom quartile, we're like in the bottom, what's that, sixth or eighth, bottom 10, 15, 16%? But it tells you that we have the ability. It tells you that we have the ability to fund our schools much better than we do now. And it's been going on for nearly twenty years in this county, and you're seeing the perpetuation of being starved. It's like starving someone of food who might be Mr. Dudney size, not picking on Mr. Dudney, but if you starve Mr. Dudney over twenty years, he's going to get really skinny. Okay? That's what's happening here in Stanley County schools. So again, that's that website. I'm going to read the first one off, local current expense. All right. Go to, where is it at? Let me pull it out for you. There it is. That's dpi.nc.gov for North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. Once you get there, click on data and reports under the data and reports tab. Scroll down that page and click on student statistical profile. Click the link for the statistical profile online listed under the title statistical profile. Say that three times. Click the plus symbol on the left side of the page, there's columns of information with plus symbols. Click the plus symbol beside financial information. You'll see various table numbers pop up. Click Table 24 for per people expenditure ranking parentheses, child nutrition included in parentheses. Again, you can sort by LEA name, column titles, ranking, what you're going to see there is all the information that I gave you. You're going to see the latest ranking for Stanley County is a hundred and fifth out of a hundred and fifteen school districts or the bottom ten percent of local funding by our county commissioners, rank of a hundred and twelve of combined funding or the bottom three percent when we combine local, state, and federal funding. All right? On that same page, go back to the left where the plus symbols are in the tables and click Table 29 for ranking of final average daily membership, total per people expenditures and capital outlay. And again, this is where you're going to see, and you can sort the data, where you're going to see Stanley County is capital outlay five-year average of eighty-fifth out of a hundred and fifteen school districts. So I am sorry to take up so much time, but I think it's vitally important that the public continue to hear this, continue to, this is information that's readily available. This board didn't make it up, it is a data feed that's picked up by every LEA that the Department of Public Instruction manages, puts together, and provides to the public. I think it's also vitally important the taxpayer understand how their money's being spent or the lack thereof when it comes to Stanley County schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have instructional with Ms. Gibson.
No report.
Personnel with Dr. Loeffler.
We hadn't had a report, we hadn't had a meeting, so personnel must be doing great. No report.
Thank you. Ms. Watson with policy.
Yes, ma'am, we have some policies that we need to vote on tonight, they've been tabled for thirty days. You want me to read all these?
That's up to you. I think you can state that they're listed there in board docs, or you can read them out. It's really your choice, it's your committee's thing.
There's a lot of them down here.
Board members, there's a list of the policies that are there that have been provided for you in board docs for the last thirty days that I will now entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second. A motion and a second. Any discussion? Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, those have passed?
Then we, because of those that we voted on, we have to rescind these, and I will read these.
Yes, ma'am.
Policy thirty-eighty, academic freedom, policy fifty-forty, unethical.
Yeah.
Unethical influence, policy fifty-fifty, gifts to employees, policy fifty-ninety-five, personnel, political activity, policy fifty-one-oh-five, non-school employment.
Can you not hear me? Where was I? Policy fifty-one-ten, consulting, policy fifty-one-twenty, employee conflict of interest, fifty-four, policy fifty-four-forty, attorney consolation with employees, policy fifty-four-five, minimum leave time, policy fifty-one-fifty, annual vacation leave, policy fifty-one-fifty-five, personal leave, policy fifty-one-sixty, emergency closing, inclement weather, weather leave, policy fifty-one-sixty-five, sick leave, policy fifty-one-seventy, leave without pay, policy fifty-one-eighty, parental involvement leave, policy fifty-one-eighty-five, military leave, policy fifty-one-eighty-six, voluntary shared leave, policy fifty-one-ninety, jury duty or court attendance, policy fifty-two-hundred, travel expenses, policy fifty-two-twenty, transitional return to work, policy fifty-three-twenty, that one before that was fifty-two-twenty, I'm sorry, and fifty-three-twenty, employee work day or work week, policy fifty-three-forty-five, tutoring for pay, policy fifty-five-twenty, experience credit for classified employees, and policy fifty-six-thirty, time schedules.
And board members, those are up to be rescinded because they have been replaced by the new policies we just approved, so I just need a motion to approve these to be rescinded.
I move we approve or rescind.
I have a motion. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Anything else, Ms. Watson?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. I have safety and security with Mr. Swornson.
No report.
Okay. Next on our agenda under, on the O one I, is curriculum instruction, I think that's you, Dr. Dennis.
Yeah, I just have a quick little presentation once it comes up for our student achievement since the last time we met, the student achievement. Information and data from the state has been released, and I put together just a few slides I want to go through, and please let me know if you have any questions. But what it really shows, it shows quite an increase in the number of schools who met or exceeded growth and quite a significant decrease in the number of schools that are low performing. What you see here is the first one, is you see your school letter grades, and you see in the right hand, you know, of course, there's the names of the schools. The letter grades are colored, and what you'll see actually in the far right column is the little red places are where there was some loss in the school performance grade score. And some of them went down a little bit, we had some that were extremely high, like Stanley Early College High School, they were ninety, they went down one point, it's not really significant. SCOV is our online school with a very transient population, you know, there's a lot that goes into that that's not necessarily controlled by teachers since a lot of it's all online and through admin. But as you see, even the ones that dropped, dropped very little. And we did have some, like if you look at Aquadale or Norwood, that extreme significant gains, fifteen points and thirteen points respectfully, which is quite a significant gain. And a little pie chart there for those who like color and like pie charts, you'll see how we were closer to fifty percent there for our low performing schools in 22, 23, and we've cut that all the way down to what is a ten, it's right at twenty-five percent. So we cut that in half. Thank you. This is just a graphic I'll let you look at, but what it shows is if you see any of the red, that's where we kind of went down, all the whites where we went up. So it's always good when the white outweighs the red, and even the red's really small numbers, like point three, point seven. The one area we do have for improvement would be Math Three, I'll say that, we had a significant drop in Math Three, but everyone else was a small drop, but we also had some big gains as well. So you'll look at like Math Four, there's a fifteen-point increase, and Grade Four, all subjects was eleven-point-five across the board. So there's some good numbers there. I like seeing small amounts of red and larger amounts of white. This is the growth status, so this is the, these are the schools that met or exceeded growth and with their index. So as you can tell, we had in 22, 23, a little over half our schools did not meet growth, and now only twenty-two-point-seven, less than twenty-five percent did not meet growth. So a lot of those really came up, and we had a significant increase, of course, in the met growth, but we also had an increase in the exceeded growth as well. If you look at the low performing districts where Stanley County schools used to be kind of on that verge, we've really jumped up a lot. We got Richmond, Charlotte, we're now above them. Again, we only, instead of having the ten schools, we're only, we're down to five schools. So just a little reference for surrounding counties and counties like ours. And this is just another visual comes from the state, you can see how in 21, 22, 22, 23, the schools on low performing list, and now how we've dropped several of them off, well, half of them for that matter. And your four-year cohort graduation rate, do want to give a shout out to South Stanley High School, the only comprehensive school to hit that ninety-five or above mark where both of our early colleges did, that's impressive, West Stanley, a lot of us had good numbers. And now our four-year graduation cohort rate is above the state by about a point, and we were a little lower than the state. All right, so nutshell, that's just a quick down and dirty of school performance. I know we're going to go in these numbers a little more with the curriculum committee, so it was a good year for West Stanley as far as academic progress. Thank you. Or excuse me, for Stanley County Schools academic progress. I was reading West Stanley right on the thing, you're like, wait, wait, wait a minute. Sorry, I was reading it right there, but for Stanley County Schools.
West and several others.
West did a good job too, but so did a lot of our schools.
Dr. Dennis, can you go back?
As a whole.
Dr. Dennis, will you go back to that slide? The one, it's our, it's our high schools, but we have the math course rigor.
Yes.
And we have ninety-five percent.
Yeah, Tim can explain that better, but the math course rigors, when you take all your math that you're supposed to take by the state, because we have some, and Tim, feel free to speak up out there, we have some students that can opt out of certain math, especially that fourth math, and the math course rigor, they complete all the math in a timely manner.
Math course rigors, students that pass NC Math Three.
Okay. So they would have the one, the two, and the three. Yeah, all right, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Dennis. Sweet.
Got a comment real quick. Just a real quick comment about growth versus proficiency. You look at our schools' letter grades, you see a lot of Cs and even some Ds. It's been proven that the way we do accountability in North Carolina is faulty. We use eighty percent proficiency scores, which is nothing more than if you take twenty kids, how many of them make an eighty or better on it? And we only take twenty percent of growth. Growth is real education. That's taking an individual child, finding out where he starts at, we have a complex formula that SAS folks give us, and how much they grow and how much they gain in that subject matter based on what they had coming through the door. If North Carolina was legit about accountability, our Cs would be Bs and our Ds would be Cs because growth is what really happens in a classroom and in a school. We rate our schools based on growth, but if you take the data all the way down to the individual student, you can see Johnny Smith, who should have made a sixty on the end of course, made a sixty-two. Well, that's not a proficient kid, but that's a kid that learned as much as he possibly could and maybe a little bit more. That's the best reflection on how hard our kids are working, what our schools and our admins are working. I couldn't be more proud of the growth scores. We get the real data for the whole year, I guess in October, something like that, but we are trending in the right direction, and in fact, we're beating Charlotte Meck who has pockets twenty times deeper than ours. It's, 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 it just tells you how hard our people are working to get those scores up. So for the layman out there, in my mind, as someone that taught for twenty-eight years and took the numbers down to the, you know, the most basic level, growth is what really counts. Your teachers are teaching the kids as individuals, and when you got twenty-five in there, that's saying something.
Well, I will say, we remiss if I didn't say that we have a great curriculum team and great teachers, great administrators, done a lot of hard work to get here. Because when we started looking at some of our stuff toward the end of the first semester, we weren't trending in the direction we wanted to go, so we had to put a lot of hard work in to get this accomplished.
And that's, that's what, kind of where I was going to go, Mr. Swornson, so I appreciate your comment. You know, you can get a student in at the beginning of the year and grow a student ten, twelve points, and maybe they still aren't quite to that proficient mark, but that student grew a big amount in a year. And I agree, I couldn't agree with you more, I think that scale is just not fair to our students or our staff, the way that it's evaluated. But for me, looking at the growth numbers, Dr. Dennis, I feel the same, that means our teachers are working hard, our students are working hard, and that means that our curriculum department, Mr. Plummer, you guys are doing the things that you guys need to be doing to keep our staff on the right tracks throughout the year, and, you know, to have a lot more white on that chart than red, that, from looking at it from past years, we're moving in the right direction and our kids are moving in the right direction. And even if those letter grades aren't where most would think they should be, I can look at this and see that we're going in the, we're trending in the way we want to go, and so I appreciate the hard work you guys have put in for that.
And I want to say too, that even a lot of this happens in and around the classroom, you know, if we didn't get our kids to school and we didn't get them fed, you know, have the proper learning, safe learning environment. So I want to thank everyone. It was a whole team, I didn't want to exclude anyone, it was a whole team event that, you know, helped bring this together.
That is, that is true. If we don't get them here, the teachers can't teach them, so thank you, Dr. Dennis, for that point.
And I would like to add this, Madam Chair, just echoing off what Mr. Swornson said, it's all about the growth, everything's about the growth. And, and teachers, it's a shout out to our teachers and our staff at all of our schools because it's more than just the one test that the child takes for the EOG. We know it's important, but we look at all the curriculum, we look at our curriculum team here at the county office, we look at the support that they provide for our teachers, and, you know, it's, it's just a shout out to our teachers and our students and their families that put education, making it important. And when we see that, then we're seeing the growth. And, you know, we've asked the DPI, whatever, to change this grading scale, haven't we, Mr. Swornson, for years and years to do that? It just kind of goes on deaf ears.
It's always in that legislative agenda.
But for any teacher that is watching, administrator, staff person, all the way as far as cafeteria, everyone, everyone has a part in a child's learning. And we, to see all this with met growth and exceeding growth, that's what we look for, and I'm very proud. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have superintendent comments. Oh, hang on, I'm sorry. Budget update. While we move everything around on this agenda, mine is still on the O one, so budget update.
So I'm going to read something real quick, just want to give you a quick, like hot off the press. ESER ended yesterday, essentially. We had to get everything encumbered, correct? Right now, we have nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand, eleven hundred and seventeen dollars, fourteen cents encumbered. There is a remaining balance of eight thousand, five hundred and thirty-five dollars and fifty-six cents, but our indirect costs have not come out yet. So when our indirect costs come out, that should pretty much deplete the rest of that, correct, Mr. Dudney? So it's pretty much all spent. Just want to give you that. I was asked by the, well, Mr. Dudney and I, Mr. Dudney helped put these numbers together, I did a lot of work on it, I just put it in this little PowerPoint. But we went over them and we discussed them, and so we all understand them. But we were asked to take the budget that was given to the county and then take the amount we were given and then find out what we could fund and could not fund, essentially what we got to fund and what we can't fund that we would like to. So I'm going to go through this, and you can stop me if you have any questions. It's a bunch of figures. But essentially, we wanted twelve teaching positions. So seven of them we will not fund, and that's the number, the red numbers match up, so we are putting three hundred and eighty-nine thousand, five hundred and forty-five dollars to fund five out of local current expense. The deans of students for Alamo High School and Alamo Middle School, the additional ones we could not fund. Central office positions, and we'll go down that at the bottom, those two linked together, we're asking one point four million, we've been able to fund in about a one point one. And so the safety and security director, we couldn't fund, we had to actually leverage some state monies that we could have used for something else for that. The director of community engagement, we couldn't fund, and we couldn't fund avid coordinator for the district anymore, we had used ESER fund for that, and we knew that may be a limited expense. We had some others too, like agency core tutors and things like that, but we knew that would be a limited expense, but we would have liked to continue them, but we could not continue them. So your local funds request, we did have the twenty-three data managers, that's the data managers of our schools, we have to fund that. Transportation positions and bus drivers, of course, had to be funded. We had to fund our maintenance positions, our athletic directors, our coaches. We had to fund our maintenance positions, our athletic directors, our coaches, the principal and assistant principal supplements, teacher substitutes, those are for just the subs that come in when the teachers are off or any kind of training. We would have liked to kept the agency core tutoring, so we could not fund that. Some of the schools are deciding to use our Title I monies to fund. So if you see some tutors in schools, they've used their individual Title I monies to fund that. We looked at advanced academic teachers that would have taught some AP classes and higher level classes that would have had some lower student numbers. We did not fund that, but we, of course, the classified pay scale by the state, we have to fund, so that was a must fund. Next slide. Teacher supplements, we wanted to get to 8% for the positions. We could not fund that. We did go up to 6% because we did get a little bit of additional money to bump that up to 6%. Harder staff incentive bonuses at some of our higher need schools, we could not fund those anymore. We were wanting to add four secondary instructional coaches. The elementary has the instructional coaches, we need instructional coaches at the secondary level and so we were not able to fund that. Teacher academy would have been an academy for, we have right now, a lot of beginning teachers, 75 of which are residency teachers who have no formal education in education, if you know, they're not licensed teachers, they didn't go through a teacher prep program. So it's really helped them since we have so many, because right now we have one person who is a beginning teacher, support person that really kind of tries to help all that. But again, there's a lot, there's a lot of beginning teachers, first year teachers and residency teachers, so we were not able to have that program. Teaching Stanley Scholarship Program would have been a grown your own program to where we would have provided scholarships and tuition for students who would want to come back and teach in Stanley County, kind of like the teaching fellows. We didn't fund that as well. We had to fund the utility and energy, the maintenance and repair, insurance dues and fees, and that maintenance and repair, that's not the big capital stuff, that's like if I got to paint that wall over there. And contracted services with EC and a lot of different things that we contract out for, we have to fund all that. So if you go to the next one, the resource officers, that's what it'll cost if we don't get the grant fund, so we can't count on the grant fund yet. If we get the grant fund, we may have a little bit of extra money for some, for different things. Technology services, software and subscriptions, like in minimum, a bunch of things like that. IXL, whatever we were to pay for at the county level is 380,000 dollars. Classroom supplies, we could not fund, to get a state funded allotment, so we do give them those monies, but we don't want to give an additional. Athletic supplies and band supplies, we did beef up a little bit, did we have a little more, was that same as last year? Okay, I thought we did. I thought we gave another 20 or whatever, so, but we did decide to fund that, so we're going to fund that. Charter school payments, that money has to come out no matter what, so that's an expense that will always reoccur. Staff development, travel expenses, we wanted to bump it up a little bit, that provides some more staff development opportunities, of course, with that comes paying for travel and reimbursements, but we were not able to, so we're going to fund at the same level we've been funding. Curriculum instructional support initiative, 750,000 dollars, we weren't able to fund for some much needed instructional supports. So the total funds requested by the board were 22,725,123. We were funded at 6,503,60, so the difference, we had to go back and see what, you know, 6,224,763 dollars, we had to take out of our initial budget that weren't funds available after our request. All right, you want to go to capital? Here we go.
Well, real, real quick, Dr. Dennis.
Yes, sir.
Short on time, but it seems like we've lost out by that lack of funding, because I'm not going to beat that horse again, but what we're having to cut out of the budget request are built around the classroom, built around teachers, built around curriculum, built around helping some of these, our harder schools, harder to staff, really built around development and just basically instruction.
Yeah, and what my team and I did when we really kind of put this together, I know when we met the finance team, I think the directive that was given to us and the directive we all agreed upon, I should state, is that when we do our funding, it all go around student achievement and increasing student achievement. So that was the meat of what we kind of, or the way I understood it, we were moving and I agree with that, that's the way ever school budget should be, but I, I think that's a correct statement, yeah.
Before you start, hang on one second, Dr. Dennis. It is looking like we are not going to be done in about seven minutes, so I will need a motion to extend our meeting past 10 per board policy.
Motion to extend the meeting past 10 o'clock.
Any discussion? Hate to say, but all in favor? Okay, any questions? Go ahead, Dr. Dennis.
I'll speak quickly. Furniture equipment, we have a big need for more furniture and equipment. Ours is old, it's not modern equipment. We're pulling stuff out of old storage and it's expensive. We ask for close to a million dollars on it. We're going to, we're going to budget 100,000 dollars and that's just much needed replacement, even though we really do need to get on a cycle of replacing this furniture. We need to have a plan to go through and systematically do it, but of course, that's going to take funding. Student staff devices, Chromebook and refresh, we wanted a million. We can put 500,000 toward it. Of course, you know, losing ESER fund and I think I should say also that, you know, you lose an ESER fund, we were able to kind of help stay afloat and supplement some of that with ESER funding, but since that's gone, we don't have that cushion. If we need more laptops or if we need other things, it's got to solely come on what we have because we were able to use that and we were able to build, buy some stuff and build some fund balance and do some different things, but of course, that money's dried up as I told you earlier. Intercom repairs and replacement, we use ESER monies to replace some of our old intercom systems. We didn't have enough to replace them all, we really need to look at the middle schools, but there are some repairs and some things that need to happen, so we cut 750 out of that request, so we're going to fund 250 of that, what we're given. Parking lot repairs and playgrounds, we wanted 350. We're going to put 100 toward it. Tennis courts, track repairs and replacement, which are extremely expensive, looking at about 925,000 is what we asked for. We can put 100,000 toward it. Bleachers repaired, gym, field repairs, I think you just heard earlier how much a bleacher system can cost at a high school, it's extremely expensive. You know, 600,000 wouldn't even do two at a high school, but we'll put 100,000 and we have some monies already put together for funding the West Stanley project. Roofing, I'm not going to go down that road, I think we spoke about it enough. We'll put 500,000 toward roofing. Painting, this is the big paint jobs, 100,000, we have some big needs at some of our schools for painting and especially taking off old paint that's just cracking and falling off the wall. We'll put 70,000 of the 100,000 requested toward that. Window repair replacements, we're going to do all of those, that, that's an energy saving mechanism as well, because we have some really old windows in some of our schools. On and canopy repairs and replacement, I think you guys saw some on and canopies that Mr. Benton showed you in his slide deck, 45,000 we ask, we're going to put 25 toward it. Our ADA improvements, if you know you have an ADA improvement, you have to do the ADA improvement, so we'll fund that fully at 50,000. Last few things, HVAC repairs, extremely expensive. We've talked before about some much needed HVAC repairs. We requested a million, so we put 500,000 for it. Carpet and floor coverings, mainly that's get rid of carpet in most places and put proper floor covering. We're going to fund 46,125 we ask. Maintenance activity buses, fleet vehicles, that has to be funded, so we're funding it full at 120. The central office rent has to be paid, we're funding it at 90. The modular unit lease, those are the leases of other crowded schools, a lot of them in the southern, incorrect, those are those leases?
Stanfield.
That's just Stanfield, I thought so. It's 24,000 we got to fund. Security cameras and metal detectors, vestibules, since our Article 44 comes in our local current expense, what we have here out of, that we can get out of capital outlay, we'll fund 100,000 and 500,000 we ask. Fencing, 100,000, we're going to fund half of that. The architect fees, I think that Mr. Benton did a good job earlier saying that we need to use architects and engineers for them before we do a lot of these projects and they get a lot of these plans, so that'll go to that. We need an empty driveway improvement, especially to keep a lot of the traffic from backing up on 24/27. More equipment and lease, so we'll fund 40,000, 120,000 we ask. So in the end, the total capital outlay funds request was 9,149,000. It was funded at 4.15 million and so the difference is just shy of 5 million. And that is our report.
Dr. Dennis, if I can make a comment?
Please do.
You'll notice already, that was presented by Keith earlier, about the West Stanley High School bleacher being 300 some million, 300 some thousand dollars. Okay, I've already got to find funding to cover the additional 280 some thousand dollars there because we only got, we only, right now, put 100,000 in bleacher repair. So me and Keith talked about that while y'all were in closed session. And also as well, just to let y'all know, on the HVAC repairs, we were able to throw a lot of those HVAC repairs in the last flow of ESER money that we've done in the last six months. So that's, that's cut out some of that where we won't have to have a total of a million dollars in that lineup.
Thank you.
And to clarify to the public, the ESER funding was restricted. I mean, there were, it could only be used for certain purposes that were defined, I think.
For air quality.
Exactly, but the funding came in from the federal government down to the state and then, you know, you report to the state on, or submit your application for that.
It was one of the lineups.
You couldn't just use it for anything.
Now, we tried to take some stress off of our budget, though, with some much needed repairs and capital, things that we were allowed to do, especially with air, air quality improvement and stuff like that, using the ESER funds. That's all I have, yes ma'am.
If there are no questions for Dr. Dennis on the, on his slideshow, I will move on to board member comments, so I just want to make sure there are no questions. Yeah, okay. I'll start with superintendent com, superintendent comments, Dr. Dennis.
My thoughts and prayers are to family that lost one of theirs today. It was one of our educators. I'll keep their privacy in mind and just say that we're thinking about them as a school system. October 2nd is School Custodians Appreciation Day, that's coming up tomorrow. October 6th is National Coach Day and October 9th is the Indigenous Peoples' Day. For our weeks, we have the 14th of August, October is National School Lunch Week and the 23rd of the 31st of October is National Red Ribbon Week. And I think we did talk about it in work session, but I would like to say that I appreciate all that Ms. Tabasco is doing for our program. We have had a nice increase in our, you know, number of school lunches that we've been putting out, participation rate, I should say. And my kids are eating out and I think she's doing great things, where they were a little pickier before. So evidently, school lunches, a hit. Lisa, in Dennis' house. So October, excuse me, the months, the month of October, this is National Principals Month, National Bullying and Prevention Month and National Fiscal Therapy, Therapy Month. And I just do want to take one second, I know it said earlier, just thoughts and prayers with all those on the western end. I talked to one of the superintendents that was heavily affected Sunday and they've got a monumental task in front of them and they've got a lot to get through and it's not, it's going to take a lot of time. And just my thoughts are with them and all our superintendents on the western end or any that were around the state where they were affected by the tropical storm. Thank you.
Thank you. Board member comment, I'll start over here with Mr. Lisk.
I think I've said plenty and it's late. Only thing I will say is thank you to the county office leadership, the teachers and staff, looking as a non educator at the school performance grades. I have lots of questions, but I do see a marked improvement across the board and I think that's, you know, due to a lot of things, but the whole system, the students, everyone's working with minimal resources and it's fantastic, the results that you're driving. So thank you.
Ms. Watson?
I don't have a whole lot to say, but I would like to say I'm really disgusted with the way things are going with these roofs and all that. I think it's a shame that our commissioners don't see this. I can't believe that you would put our children in buildings that have been here since who knows what. You know? I, I, I'm just appalled, I'm just appalled at the way things are going with that.
Early to mid last century.
What?
Early to mid last century.
Yeah. I, I, I don't, I don't understand, I just don't understand that you don't see that these children that are pouring their hearts out, the teachers that are pouring their hearts out and educating these kids and putting them where they are. I don't understand, I just don't understand.
Thank you. Mr. Sorensen?
What a meeting we've had, what a meeting we've had. Based my comments on my favorite Clint Eastwood spaghetti western, which some of you folks are too young to even recognize what that is, but old gun, gunfighter movies, The Good, The Bad and The Ugly. The good, our academic growth is, it's, it's exceptional, it's exemplary. We are never going to be where we want to be, but we are trending in the right direction and in some of our schools, we're just hyping up and in a lot of things that are really important, we're doing as good or better than the state. And when you look at that, the one chart that Dr. Dennis showed you, we're outperforming Charlotte MECC as far as number of failing schools. There, that, to me, that's just a testament to the good things that are going on. Already talked about the 80/20 split, which is nonsense. The bad, Hurricane Helene was a tragedy and, you know, the first night that we started getting reports and stuff, I knew how bad it was going to be. Lived in Texas when Camille came up through Louisiana. We still don't know the depth and the breadth of that, of that tragedy and it's just, it's a horribly difficult time. But at the same time, I am so proud to be a citizen of Stanley County. By Saturday morning, there were people, businesses, citizens, churches, local law enforcement, first responders, were already mobilizing to get people up there the best that they could to start helping, literally 48 hours before the state and federal government started really moving anything in. And the, the people of Stanley County amazed me, and I know they're out there, I kind of panicked and went to one of these donation places right off the bat, went and bought some diapers and stuff, like I know what I'm doing, like with that, but, and I worried when I talked to this guy, I said, man, he just had a little pile of stuff there. It's already Saturday about lunchtime. He said, nah, man, come look in the back, the back room was full. So I'm so proud to be a member of a community that cares, you know, feels like that. So to that, to that extent, I'd like to make a little quote, "In times of darkness, we need points of light." And the people in Stanley County, so many of you have been that and continue to be that, the horrors up in the mountains are going to continue to unfold for weeks, but at least they're, they can know the folks of Stanley County care about them. Okay, that's the good and the bad, get a little emotional thinking about it. The ugly, there's another hurricane heading our ways, heading to Stanley County specifically. It's a fiscal hurricane and it's going to hit us pretty much the way this hurricane hit the mountains with a flood of needs and no resources. There's people complaining that the Fed and state weren't ready for this hurricane, they weren't ready, well, I have seen zero preparation by our county commissioners to, to head off the hurricanes heading us, heading our way, the fiscal hurricane. These needs aren't going away, they get worse every day. And I have zero faith in the fact that they're going to have the right response and there's some people questioning the, the government's response to the other thing up there. When we are 105th in the state and we're going to gain like one or two spots, but our needs are exponentially growing, we're sinking. And I'm just saying that the, the ugly is, something's got to give. No one wants to talk about it, but there's another tax reevaluation coming next year. Okay, so everybody's going, I fussed the last time. The last tax reevaluation, the county commissioners decided to overcut the tax rate. They cut it to a place where they can't do what they need to do to be responsible and effective county commissioners. What are we going to do next year when our needs have grown? You saw that we, all these things we can't afford to do that we should be doing. We can't afford AP classes in Stanley County. That makes me angry. What are we going to do next year when that evaluation comes out? Are they going to lower the rate again? We might as well just start shutting down the system and to quote one of our illustrious commissioners, their only constitutional duty is to build, is to hurt buildings and technology. Fine, let's shut the system down. If you're not going to fund us like you're supposed to, let's just, I'm just not one that's happy doing things halfway and I don't mean to get all animated and angry, but when I see our teachers, I hear our teachers, they're killing themselves trying to do these things. They're unpacking standards from the state that vary from year to year. They're doing PLCs two and three times a week, they're just killing themselves to get our kids to learn, but as a county, we're just, we're just not letting that happen. So when I say the county, I'm proud of the citizens, I couldn't be more proud to be a member of this, a citizen, a citizen of this county, but if the county government is... is failing our children, and it bothers me at a level I cannot even express.
Thank you. Ms. Gibson?
I don't know if I follow that. Certainly, a shout out and congratulations to our recipients tonight of the, the awards that they received, well-deserving, and certainly with our board, with the Bell Award, and, you know, I, I want to extend to every board member here that I enjoy working with all of you, and I know that we, we have the same desires, and we see the needs that are facing our school system, so I, I do enjoy working with all of you. I had the pleasure last week of attending Indy's Book Fair and eating lunch with my little granddaughter and grandson, which was fun. There was a massive amount of people, Dr. Dennis, I even asked one time, how many people are coming through here, and they, you know, they were like, well, we had to count at one time, but not sure, but they, I know they raised a lot of money with that book fair, it was excitement everywhere, and I really, really enjoyed that. And then, I, I really want to say, because of looking at our scores and everything, to our, our teachers, you know, I'm, I am subbing in a neighboring county, two to, I average two to three days a week, and I see what teachers are doing all the time, I see what our teachers are doing here, I see what they're doing in a neighboring county, they're amazing, it's, it's absolutely amazing what our teachers do, and that's, it's just the most noble of professions, in my opinion, and I, I appreciate them. So a huge shout out to all of our teachers and our staff and our principals, administrators, our county office staff and Dr. Dennis. And then, I know that Ms. Poplin has been very involved with helping to collect items, her Nehemiah Project, and I know, I'm, we'll probably speak to all this, but I thank her for what she does with that, in helping the community, and, and our, our community involvement with everything, so that is all, thank you.
Ms. Whitaker?
I also had the opportunity to go have breakfast when they had grandparents' day at Oberstam with my granddaughters. Schools got really smart in that they do the book fair when they have grandparents' day, so there were a lot of people there, and you spend a lot of money, but that's okay, it's, it's, I really enjoy it when I get an opportunity to go. I wanted to just say congratulations to Beverly Pennington, for someone who's been involved in athletics as long as she has, you know, I think athletics are kind of a beast of their own, and for someone to be involved in and doing it as long as she has, that's, the award was right, it says for the person who goes above and beyond the call of duty, and I think anybody that's involved in athletics has to do that, so congratulations to her. I wanted to just especially say congratulations to Aquadale and Norwood, when we looked at their scores, they had the most growth in our county, I think overall, our county did very well, and we have a lot to be proud of, and that is a testament to you, Dr. Dennis, because I think it starts with you and your team, and you have a lot to be, be proud of, and we, we are very thankful. I would encourage you to go back and, and watch our board meeting, write the websites down that Mr. Lisk gave you, they also too are available, I believe we have them on our website and on Facebook, so I encourage you to go look at those. Sometimes when you see things in writing, it means a little bit more than you do when someone's just reading it out to you, so I encourage you to go to those websites and look at, look at our funding and see where we rank. I think for a lot of people, they hear us say it, but I think if they can look at it in writing and actually go to a DPI website, it'll mean a whole lot more.
Thank you. Dr. Lefler?
I think it was great tonight with our Stanley stars, which we have every month, those are the real people that keep the schools running, because without them, our schools would not operate, and we had, everybody was great tonight, that was, that was recognized. Also, Ms. Pennington, of the three, four years that I've been here, she, she's one of the ones that always seems to step in front of the bus, like I told her tonight, instead of getting an athletic award, she ought to get the fireman award, because whereas most people would run from the fire, she jumps in the fire. So she must have been an awful good athlete, but, but she's a great person, and, and we're lucky to have them. Also tonight, it, it was great that we recognize people who actually are achieving something, like Mrs. Simmons. I can imagine how tough it would be to get a doctorate in education while you're teaching or while you're in a prin, principal, it, it's tough, and I'm, I'm proud of her for doing that, because that's a gigantic accomplishment. So our school grades have come up, and that's happened over the four years also, because I, I think when Dr. Dennis came in, when she got, when we got some changes in the central office, things started changing. We have different curriculum, we, he has met with the curriculum commit, Mr. Plummer, and, and they've all worked to make our, our system better. It's tougher, but school's supposed to be tough, and, and we want our kids to be at the same level as everybody else in the state, but a little higher, and I, I think that's where we're heading, and, and it seems like we're, we're having improvements over the whole county, which is great. As far as the thing with the funding, we've had great data, we've had everybody speaking and everything, but nothing will change until the public has their opinion, because we're just someone, we're the board that is asking them for assistance, but a lot of times, that doesn't work, so for things to happen, the public's going to have to ask them for assistance. I think we had a great meeting tonight, a long meeting, but I, I think everything has been very good. Good luck to the people in the mountains, everybody's trying to help them as much as they can, and we're just fortunate that we ended up on the right side of that storm. Thank you.
You guys made it really hard to go last night, so I will just sort of ditto what everyone has said about our school system and our, our school grades going up, and our kids are doing well, and we've had a lot of talk over facilities and finance and funding tonight, but I do want to make a comment, not, not about what I'm doing necessarily, because my job title for my job that I do Monday through Friday is the Community Resource Coordinator, but what the county's doing, by Saturday afternoon, we had trucks mobilizing across this county, collecting supplies, and we had trucks headed to the mountains Sunday morning, some of the first folks, and it's bad, it's really bad there, and just keep those folks in your prayers. But I want to say, something that our county does is we rally well. We may not agree on things with other entities, nonprofits, or whatever, but when it comes down to it, we team up and we rally, and that's what we're doing, and help where you can, it's unimaginable that the things that these folks are reporting back, they have a lot of work, they're going to need items and things for weeks, sorry, I get emotional about this, because they're families that have no idea where their loved ones are, and I can't imagine, so. Be in prayer for those folks, I'm proud of you guys, and I'm proud of our system, so thank you. We have personnel up next.
Good evening, board, we are requesting your approval tonight. Section one of the personnel report is for your information, however, section, section two does require your action.
I believe we approve section two of the personnel agenda.
I have a motion to approve section two. Multiple seconds? All in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you.
Um, the date and time and location of our next meeting is Tuesday, November 5th, 2024, in the Jean McIntyre Room at 6:15, and I now will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion in multiple seconds. All in favor? Any opposed? We are adjourned.